Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, August 2nd, 2011 at 6:30 PM. We're at the Palm Coast Community Center for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast City Council. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with which we shall govern all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nets.
Here.
Vice Mayor Meeker.
Here.
Councilmember DeStefano.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Mormon.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you very much. First item on our agenda is approval of the minutes of the July 19th City Council meeting, the July 26th Council workshop. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion for approval?
A motion to approve the agenda item.
Second.
I have one correction on page eight, under the comments toward the bottom of the page, where we were talking about possible budget adjustments. I'm quoted as being said, "When you closed Fire Station 22," I believe it was a rhetorical question, "if you closed, what would be the result?" It's certainly not a fait accompli at this point. So with that...
With that notation, I'll motion to approve the item.
Second.
Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda item number two, presentation of awards to PCMA TV 199. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, proud to... But, all right, Tom, you coming up, or... Obviously, we haven't rehearsed this. I'm not sure what the... Mr. James, good to see you tonight.
Good to see you.
Take it from here.
I thought we'd get more promo from the CM, but, um, yeah, it's a really cool bunch of awards we received recently, um, actually international awards, uh, from thousands and thousands of participants who are judged, um, from the top brass in the industry of video production and film production. Um, our video production staff, Tom Hanson, Video Production Coordinator, and Jason Geraldo, who is back there as well, um, Video Production Specialist, worked their butts off, um, year after year. I mean, they're not only the guys back here, um, covering the council meetings, but they're helping, you know, put the city of Palm Coast on the map essentially through social media channels and our YouTube channel, the TV 199 channel, and just, um, really trying to take the interactive angle to, uh, to use the interactive media to promote the city. So, in a fitting manner, we, uh, put together a little video that kind of highlights TV 199 and these three awards that we won, so we wanted to show that to each other.
I'd like to call this meeting to order.
Hello?
What are you putting in your recycle bin?
Hey, I'm running here.
You can approach holidays?
Thank you.
Day number 100 jobs.
Stop in the red van.
You mentioned Lot 11.
Environmental education.
Fires come paying a holiday, thoughtful store in favor.
How we want to welcome you.
We're glad that people put forth the effort to come out and cheer for us on a great day like a joyride.
Oh, yeah, it was awesome. Never had experience like this before, and now that I actually did it, yeah, it was kind of too awesome.
(singing) Thank you, Mayor, for being down so long.
I think it's great. I think it's wonderful. Everybody needs to get involved in doing, quite enough throwing trash. Don't throw it out, that's a better word.
Is that a golf ball?
On the beach.
Where?
It's Thailand, dude.
So, we're talking international hardware here, so, um, gold, silver, and bronze.
Whatever.
Um, so, really pumped for these guys, and we want to take the time to present these awards to council and, uh, to the citizens of Palm Coast, and really to all the departments here at the city, because, you know, it's more than just the camera, it's the content and putting these stories together and, and to make for, you know, something fun to watch and educational, so, really for everybody.
Jim, can we look at the awards?
He's going to present them.
Yeah, absolutely. We thought, um, maybe Mayor Nets and maybe Mr. Meeker, since you were...
Come on, Vice Mayor.
I want to shake your hand, but...
(inaudible)
Put it back on the table. And the best part is that they seem to have fun while they're doing it. Congratulations to everybody involved. It's, it's nice to know that, that professionals in the industry recognize the hard work of our city employees. Glad to receive those. Someday, we'll have a display case to put them in. Agenda item number three, proclamation recognizing, I came and read, the 42 members of the African American Society proudly reached their 80th-plus birthday. Mr. Lewis.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, it gives me great honor to read this proclamation tonight for the African American Cultural Society. A proclamation, whereas the mission and purpose of the African American Cultural Society of Palm Coast is to preserve and perpetuate the cultural heritage of African Americans through social, educational, artistic, and intellectual activities. And whereas the African American Cultural Society recognizes that Palm Coast is a more vibrant community because of the talent, faith, values, and magnanimous contributions of their numerous members who have reached the age of 80-plus. And whereas the African American Cultural Society commemorated their silver, gold, and platinum member birthday celebrations at their July 23rd, 2011 event, honoring over 42 members for celebrating their 80th-plus birthday. And whereas the city of Palm Coast stands proudly alongside the African American Cultural Society to value and honor a generation that has experienced love, laughter, challenges, and triumphs over the years. And whereas this generation of Palm Coast citizens and African American Cultural Society members will continue to add spirit, energy, and value contribution, valuable contribution to their community, and now therefore be it resolved that the Palm Coast Mayor and City Council do hereby congratulate this exceptional group of citizens and wish them peace, love, and good health, as they continue to bring joy to the lives of their, to those around them. Signed, Secretary of August, 2011, City of Palm Coast, John Nets, Mayor. Congratulations.
A few words?
We will.
Well, thank you, Congress, uh, member Lewis, um, we, I feel honored and privileged to be a member of this organization. Those of you that may not be aware, we're located at 4422 US 1 North, and, uh, it's the building with the pyramid outside, as you pass, it's a white pyramid. Uh, I'm a new member to the Palm Coast community, I've been here almost six years, and I'm the Vice President of the African American Cultural Society, and I just feel honored and privileged that I'm, that we're giving this, uh, proclamation. Um, we have approximately, we have several of our auditorians in the, uh, present here today, and, uh, I'm just proud of them and us, and we continue to do the work that we've been doing. We thank you for it all.
Agenda item number four, ordinance rezoning approximately 85 acres from high industrial commercial to master plan development. Mr. Reichman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is application 2197 rezoning for Seminole Point Master Plan. It's an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of the official zoning map established in sections 2.05 and 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code, amending official zoning map for Seminole Point subdivision, parcel ID numbers 3112, 315371, 5-0's, 0010, 3112, 315371, 500041, and 3112, 315371, 500020, of the public records of Flagler County, Florida, containing 85, more or less, acres from, from High Intensity Commercial, or COM 3, and multifamily residential 2, in part to Master Plan Development Zoning District, or MPD, providing for conflict, severability, and an effective date. Mr. Mayor, this is a quasi-judicial, uh, hearing.
As a consequence, uh, council members, does anyone have any ex parte communications that need to be disclosed?
None.
You're none. Mr. Landon.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, this is, uh, actually very consistent with our Prosperity 2021 Business Park Partnership, where we have some, uh, property that's currently zoned commercial, it's at a major intersection in this case on US 1, uh, but it's not really ready for, for development, and I think this is a great example of, uh, the property owner and city staff working together to try to get it to that next step, so that if there is a good prospect out there, we are further along, and because everybody knows timing is, is very important. So, uh, we've been working with the property owner to try to come up with a, a good master plan versus just straight zoning, and Sarah's going to take the lead and provide the, uh, staff report for it.
Thank you, Mr. Landon. This site is located at US 1 and in Seminole Woods Boulevard. There's approximately 690 feet of frontage on Seminole Woods Boulevard, and approximately 2,700 feet of frontage on, uh, US Highway 1. This little notch right here is the city's well, Fiat Well Site, there's a wellhead here. Um, there's a, an existing lake here, this is the Integral Woods Project, there's 310 units that have been built to date, uh, there were 172 units remaining to be built, and those are in this area here. Uh, the Integral Woods Project has sufficient recreation and onsite retention for what's been built to date. Also, you can see on this aerial, there are some signatures here that are part of an overall wetland system that feeds in, uh, Black Branch Swamp, which also continues off-site, and we've attempted to address those, uh, conditions in our, um, uh, presentation. Uh, just as a way of background information, this line right here, uh, shows what is considered to be Lot 1, this is Lot 2, this is Lot 4, uh, this was granted a subdivision exemption here, so Lot 4 became a little bit smaller, and Lot 3, which is not part of this application, is right here. Our future land use map, uh, is shown on the left side, that shows that all of this property is mixed use, which gives a great degree of flexibility. The zoning map, which starts to ratchet down what can be used on the property, is this exhibit here. The current zoning shows all of this brown area as being multifamily residential 2. The, uh, red piece right here, which is not part of this project, is commercial, and this red area through here is, uh, high intensity commercial, which is our highest intensity category. And if you recall from the aerial, we have a lot of wetlands in this area, less wetlands in this area, so what we're trying to do is locate the majority of the development in this area in reflection of the existing conditions of the site. The conceptual plan, uh, looks a little bit like alphabet soup, but if you take a look at this, there's, the parcels are delineated, uh, by alphabet, alf, the alphabet here, um, then the smaller, uh, letters that you see in here, such as the H's and the L's and the U's, those are the upland, uh, upland is the U, high-quality wetland is H, and low-quality wetland is, uh, the L. The conceptual plan breaks down by square footage, uh, how much development, uh, potential there is on the site. There's building square footage that's listed, uh, we've got parking area listed, buffer area is listed, stormwater retention. You don't get, excuse me, you don't get to that point without having done a conceptual layout, and that is not part of this, but the development intensities are. The conceptual layout will be presented, uh, I believe, by the applicant in their PowerPoint presentation, but we did want to assure you that we did in fact have some, uh, basis on which these, uh, designations and intensities have been made. Also important to this pro, project is this connector road from Integral Woods, it would basically finish off that project, and we're also asking the developer, we're requiring the developer to build, uh, this connection down to US 1. There's other connections that are shown, uh, right here that are interconnecting to these parcels, and what's also important in driving the design of this is, this is right now a full median opening on US 1, but it's somewhat, um, uh, it's, it's located in the proper location for, uh, engineering, but it's not really in a good location given the development potential of the area, because it can't be maximized. This, this development area right here, uh, is about the maximum that you can have based upon the wetland systems that are on either side. This entrance would be a directional median opening, uh, which means there would be a left-in and right-out only. Uh, this, the E and the D delineate two parcels that could be developed on either side of that entrance road, and when we, uh, obtained the wellfield and the applicant donated the wellfield several years ago, this, uh, area, this access point became established at that So the development agreement, there's some important things going on on this. No new uses are being created, uh, through this development agreement. We're basically relocating uses around on the property and recognizing where those uses are most likely to occur. Um, we're establishing intensities and directing development to logical areas away from the natural systems. Uh, we address the possibility of commercial or residential on two of the parcels, which gives the development, developer maximum flexibility, uh, as the market returns. The predictability is created for the developer, uh, they can go out and then market in some good faith of what the city is willing to, uh, entertain on the property, and city objectives have been established for well, wetland protection, wellfield protection, floodplain protection, interconnectivity, and gateway identification. The gateway identification is a request that we would be able to locate one of our entry signs, since this is a boundary for the city on their property. Uh, the, the actual development agreement then requires construction of the internal road, uh, from US 1 and Shady Oaks Drive, as generally depicted on Exhibit 2. All on- and off-site improvements to support the development will be constructed by the developer, including dedication right away for the improvements. There will be an internally integrated system of sidewalks and natural pathways consistent with the requirements of the Land Development Code. The city may require the developer to pay into the sidewalk improvement fund for those sections along US 1 in lieu of construction, because as you note on the aerial that we saw, there's, uh, quite a bit of wetland area. Uh, recordation of conservation easements for planning areas, H and I will be required along with a master signage program, which includes location easement for the city's gateway signage, consistent with our signage program. The Planning and Land Development Regulation Board recommended to City Council approval. Uh, the applicant is in the audience, and I can put up their presentation if they'd like to make a presentation at this time.
Good evening. My name is Robert Dickinson of Dickinson Consulting here in Palm Coast. I represent the applicant. Uh, Mr. Gus Simos is the managing partner for the corporations that own the property. Uh, I appreciate the staff working with us so diligently over the last months on this master plan. We're excited about the potential of this development becoming reality at some point in the future. I think Sarah gave a very good snapshot of how the master plan was formulated with the, uh, development criteria table, uh, up in the corner, which summarizes the components of the master development plan that Sarah, uh, alluded to a few moments ago, those being the building square footage or residential units, the roads and parking, the stormwater retention, buffer and landscape and setbacks. Those are the primary components when you develop a site plan that, uh, add up to the acreage, so we, um, created this matrix, if you will, to try to establish, uh, for the plan and for the development agreement, the intensity that would be appropriate for each one of the development, uh, planning areas, as Sarah was talking about before, shown by the letters. Sarah, could I have a next slide, the, to, to help a little bit with, uh, illustration? The green area, uh, that Sarah alluded to a few minutes ago is the conservation area, which is primarily the high-quality wetland areas, as you saw on the, uh, aerial photograph as well, with some enhancement of some, um, wetland areas, uh, contained within the high-quality wetlands. The other parts of the property, the red, uh, parcels indicate those from the matrix that are earmarked for commercial development, and then the two brown parcels have two options for development, one being, uh, commercial and the other being residential. To give you a snapshot of how the colors break down, we have 41 acres of development, 41 acres of development in the red and the brown, and 41.4 acres of, uh, conservation lands in H and I, and then 3.2 acres, uh, of the existing lake system making up the 85.6 acres of the project. This is not a, what I want to do is show you what is a concept plan, it's not really part of the application, but recognizing the fact that there might be some confusion with all the letters and, and what's happening in each parcel, so, we've developed two, uh, conceptual plans, and they are, I, I can't emphasize enough, they are concepts at this point, just to illustrate to, uh, you folks this evening, as well as any potential, uh, prospects that may be interested in doing a development in the future, how that matrix, if you will, could play out in the development, okay? Again, going back to H and I, showing the wetland systems, and then showing the, uh, commercial areas. This one is a, uh, commercial center of 120,000 square feet. Uh, parcels, E and D, which are adjacent to the wellsite, uh, would respect the wellsite criteria for their development, that would, could be two parcels, 12,000 square foot each for 150,000 square feet, a small restaurant, maybe on the lake on the corner, maybe with a small convenience, uh, center on the corner of the property. For illustration purposes, again, we're using Integral Woods' second phase, which hasn't happened, but, uh, who knows? Maybe that will, uh, be the completion, the way the completion diagram would, would come to be. So we're using their plan for the purposes of this illustration. If we go to the other isolated, uh, development parcels, we have some commercial and residential shown for parcels F and G in this area. Uh, going back to a couple of the components that Sarah talked about, you know, the interconnectivity of the, uh, residential areas back through to US 1, and, you know, supportive pedestrian systems and, and, uh, you know, uh, interconnectivity for the commercial development. Another development option, uh, that illustrates the same, uh, intensity, if you will, for the components of the development, again, the wetlands, areas protected, now combining the commercial, uh, development altogether for 150,000 square feet in a big box situation. Again, it's the same, uh, type of plan, it's a little different type of plan, but the same intensity with the parking retention and the open space required. So again, just to summarize, the, the two conceptual plans that I just went over for you is to try to give, uh, a little bit better understanding of how the development agreement and the master plan could go through the process of going, uh, working with staff, going through the Land Development Code, all the criteria still has to be done, all the components of the Land Development Code have to be met by the developer at the time of, of, prior to construction. So, but this is just, the, the master plan is just the beginning of the process, again, as Mr. Landon, uh, alluded to, this just paves the way, makes it a little bit more comfortable for somebody to understand what could and could develop on this property. So there's still, uh, significant work to be done through the, uh, PLDRB and yourselves for approval of this project, you know, as it develops in the future. I'd be happy to entertain any questions, if there's anything that I can help you with.
Council question. Mr. Meeker.
I've got one. Um, Bob, can you explain to me on your, on this general map here, you got areas I, H, G, and F, and it was my understanding from the staff's presentation that that, was that originally that it came in, in high intensely, high-intensity commercial, but now it's mostly conservation, and that area is G and F, or a combination of, I guess I'll call it a lower-intensity commercial and residential? The zoning was changed on that and downzoned?
The zoning for it was originally high-intensity commercial, and it was, if you look at that entire lot, uh, this entire area was designated for commercial, and as we began to look at that and said, "Well, this commercial really is never going to be related to that commercial." We've got a high-quality wetland system here, and, and one of the diagrams showed that this was, was developed through here, and that's not the case. You know, we continue to pull that, uh, G, parcel G boundary a little farther to the south, uh, in order to, you know, recognize the wetland systems there. So, this is about the amount of the upland area that you could have, and what we're basically giving them is... giving them is two options for development. But F would be the commercial and G would be the residential, 20 units of residential.
Was the high-intensity commercial, is that something that came across from county zoning when we became a city?
Yes, it did.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Other council questions?
I have one. With Integra there and consideration for commercial development, in your discussion with that particular property owner and the people there, what was their concern or if any?
We've not had any contact from anyone in the Integra Woods complex. The reason that we're looking at that as a split designation is because once you put that hard line in there, it gets very difficult to move it around. It's better to have it on paper at this point to say, "Well, if we do get a big box user and they need to go back up in here for, you know, maybe a buffer or stormwater management, they have that ability to do that." It's not a wholesale use of that area for commercial development, if you will, because basically it's too deep and you lack the visibility to the intersection to have anything meaningful commercial there. But if they needed support facilities for their big box, they might have to encroach into that property a little bit so that addresses that situation.
So a big box may not be a proper use then?
Beg your pardon?
A big box may not be the proper use for that area.
Well, actually, it would be ideally located at the intersection. You know, the box would be down here but the rest of the supporting facilities may not be.
I had two questions. We have a fairly strict well field protection ordinance with Parcels D, E, and B, or actually D and E, I guess, they come very close to our well field. Is there adequate well field protection?
Yes, there is.
In this conceptual plan?
The applicant also agreed to certain additional restrictions on land uses.
And my second question is very similar to Mr. Lewis is if you go back to your second conceptual slide that shows the big box, would there, is there adequate buffering from Integra Woods if Integra Woods builds out Phase 2?
Yes, there is.
So the box would be down toward the front and the support stormwater retention, what have you, would be toward the rear?
Your box is here. This would be stormwater and this would be stormwater in support of that box because they wouldn't necessarily want to have a lot of retention up front because they lose the relationship to the street.
Sure.
They lose the visibility.
Just to comment before we open to public comment, for those of you that are following the discussions that have been going on in the county with regard to economic development, one of the issues that we've been trying to deal with is the distinction of pad-ready sites and shovel-ready sites and what is an adequate definition, and there really are no good definitions, but what has been pointed out to the elected officials and the development community and everybody else involved in these economic development discussions is that it takes a considerable amount of time to bring a piece of land into readiness for development. And one of the things that we've talked about at City Council is trying to work with landowners as far in advance as possible to do some of that groundwork, to do some of that preplanning to shorten the time as if and when a developer is interested in proceeding. So this is getting some stuff on the shelf, trying to shorten that development time. Are there any other council questions? Let's open the meeting to the public. Anyone from the public which should be heard on this agenda item, please give us your name. Limit your contribution to three minutes.
My name is Bill McGuire. Your Honor, my question is if the annex, or the rezoning is approved by the council in regard of making a pad-ready or shovel-ready piece of property, will the city be required to spend any money at all on this piece of property or will all that come under the jurisdiction of the developer himself? Thank you.
We've got an answer for that. Next speaker.
Dominic Adesso. I go back a lot of years. I'm here over 20 years. And I recall back maybe 10, 12, 15 years ago when we had flooding on Florida Park Drive, intensive rains, and also that area flooded quite a bit years ago. Is there enough stormwater runoff conditions to allow for that to not happen again?
We've got an answer for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker. Next speaker. So you don't approach the podium. We'll close the public portion of the meeting. First question, assuming the rezoning is approved, what costs is the city liable for? What expenses do we incur as a result of this action?
The development agreement specifically states that the applicant is responsible for all on and off-site improvements to support the project.
And the second question, I don't know if this is a question for Mr. Moden or for you, but potential flooding as this develops?
There is a culvert underneath Seminole Woods Boulevard and that is the restricting factor in this basin. And we've put in the development agreement that they have to address the culvert and the surrounding stormwater in order to develop the project. That would be looked at depending on the type of project that comes in and how much impervious coverage they'd have and whether or not it's residential, you know, that there's a different standard there for finished floor elevation. So that would all be addressed depending on the type of use that came in. But we acknowledge the culvert.
Thank you very much. Okay, back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll motion to approve the agenda item.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Meeker?
Aye.
Councilmember DiStefano?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Mormon?
Yes.
Mayor Nettles?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion is passed 5 to 0.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number five, ordinance relating to the contraction, deannexation of the property more commonly known as naturescapes. Mr. Reichman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance to City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida for the voluntary contraction or deannexation of the city boundary by deannexing 2.25 acres, more or less, of real property generally located south of State Road 100 and west of Beltar Boulevard. More particularly legally described on Exhibit A to the ordinance attached to 2 and fully incorporated herein by this reference, providing for the amendment of city boundaries to contract the subject properties from the city boundaries, providing for repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability, and an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, this property owner a few years ago asked to be annexed into Palm Coast. Since that time, it's become very obvious that we are not really able to provide services to this property because of its disconnection from Palm Coast and its connection to Flagler County, unincorporated Flagler County and Banale. She has since asked that we deannex it and staff actually agrees that this is better tied into Banale and the unincorporated area along State Road 100. Jose will give you the details as to why we think this proposal makes a lot of sense. Something very unusual. Most cities do not deannex but in this case, we have an unusual situation. Jose?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. For record, Jose Papa with the Community Development Department. This deannexation or contraction is for an area known as naturescapes. I do have some other items on the slides but I will limit my discussion to naturescapes. The location of the property as shown on this map is west of Beltar and south of State Road 100. Essentially, to give you a background on why we're, why we're looking at this item at this time, essentially to square city boundaries. It's, it really provides an improvement in terms of efficiency of services, not just within the city but really in the county. And looking at the location map, we can provide the reasons for why we would recommend the contraction of this property. Essentially, the property is about two and a quarter acres located south of State Road 100 and west, again, west of Beltar Parkway. The only access to this property, the subject property, naturescapes, is along a dirt road that's maintained by Flagler County. There is currently no way to get from a city street such as within the C-section or even within, from Beltar without having to go through this county road, county dirt road. And obviously, just looking at the map, we can see that most of the commercial areas that surround this parcel are either within the city of Banale and within unincorporated Flagler County, which provides us with the other reason as to who would be most appropriate or had the most interest in providing services to this municipality. And after discussions with Flagler County and the city of Banale, the city of Banale did express an interest and that, not just an interest, but they have a vested interest because of all the lands that are already within the city proper of Banale. And so they have every intention of providing city services to this area and in terms of efficiency, this property would be best served by the city of Banale. And we also looked at the technical requirements for contraction which is within Chapter 171 of Florida statutes. It does meet those technical requirements. Again, there's no, really no access from city roads, the only access from a dirt road through unincorporated area. The area is to be served by the city of Banale for water and sewer and of course, all the, as we looked at on the map, the adjacent commercial areas are within unincorporated Flagler County or the city of Banale. For these reasons, staff is recommending approval of the contraction of naturescapes.
Thank you. Counsel questions?
None.
Seeing none, open the meeting to the public. Anyone from the public which should be heard on this agenda item? Anyone from the public wish to be heard on this agenda item? Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. Go back to council. Additional questions, comments, or a motion?
Pretty straightforward project. I'll motion to approve the agenda item.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Meeker?
Yes.
Councilmember DiStefano?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Mormon?
Yes.
Mayor Nettles?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion is passed 5 to 0.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number six, ordinance relating to the annexation of the Graham Swamp area. Mr. Reichman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City Council, City of Palm Coast, Florida, annexing 33 parcels of real property containing 3,294 acres, more or less, and generally located south of Palm Coast Parkway and west of Culbert Lane. More particularly illegally described on Exhibit A attached here to the ordinance and fully incorporated in the ordinance by this reference, providing for the amendment of the city boundaries to incorporate the real properties into the city boundaries, providing for repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances, resolutions, severability, and an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, this is actually something that's been in works for a few years. We have an agreement with Flagler County and the Water Management District. Water Management District owns the property. Flagler County manages it for them. None of that will change but Graham Swamp has always been a part of Palm Coast and this just formally incorporates it within our boundaries. And Jose will highlight what I mean by it's actually a part of Palm Coast because a lot of the improvements out there are maintained by, by the city and are very important infrastructure for our community. So Jose, take it from there.
Yes, sir. Again, I think everybody's familiar with the location of Graham Swamp but the, just to, just to reiterate, the annexation area we're speaking of is located south of Palm Coast Parkway, east of Old Kings Road, and west of Culbert Lane and north of State Road 100. Again, to give the background for this annexation, essentially to square city boundaries, again, provide improved efficiency of services, most importantly, to protect the city interest. We have infrastructure and maintenance responsibilities within the Graham Swamp annexation area. And just to be clear, really no significant areas for development. It might not, it's really, there's not really no areas for development within the annexation area. It's mostly publicly owned or a mitigation bank. There are three parcels that are privately owned within that annexation area and those have conservation easements on them. So really, there is no areas for development within the annexation area. Just to give, again, more details on the annexation, it's a total of about 3,294 acres. Again, mainly publicly owned. You have the mitigation bank at the north end of the annexation area. That's the ITT mitigation bank. Within this area, we have, whoops, sorry. We have stormwater facilities such as mosquito ditch and culverts. We have bicycle trails, a mountain bike trail towards the southeastern end of Graham Swamp. Of course, we have our, we have the Graham Swamp Trail which is maintained by the, at the north end of the swamp and various utilities interspersed throughout the annexation area. Again, just to be redundant, I guess, at this point, we have the Graham Swamp Trail at the north end. And eventually, its potential extension from the existing trailhead south along Graham Swamp and along within city property behind Hidden Lakes down to the Lehigh Trail. So that is a proposed improvement for, in terms of annexation, for the Graham Swamp area. In addition to that, the city maintains a series of culverts underneath the existing Lehigh Trail. There is a sewer force main that runs parallel to the Lehigh Trail. And also, there's a mosquito ditch on land owned by the city that is maintained by the city and currently within the unincorporated portion of the county within Graham Swamp. As Mr. Landon mentioned, the area, this annexation is part of a three-party agreement between the city, Flagler County, and the Water Management District, which has been ongoing for about two years. We coordinated with all parties involved. The annexation will not affect the local management agreement between Flagler County and the Water Management District. The county will retain the management responsibility for Graham Swamp with the exception of those facilities that were built and maintained by the city as expressed within that agreement. And that includes the Graham Swamp Trail and its eventual expansion to the Lehigh Trail, the stormwater culverts, and the mosquito ditch. And then as previously stated, this ongoing, this annexation has been an ongoing effort between the three parties involved. And for those reasons, staff recommends approval of the annexation.
Thank you. Counsel questions? Mr. Lewis.
The three lots that you mentioned in that presentation, are those county lots and they're not part of the annexation?
Those are the lots that are owned, I'm sorry, there are three county lots that are not going to be part of this annexation. But the three lots that I mentioned that are part of this annexation are privately owned and as I mentioned, they have conservation easements on them. They're owned by ICI.
Thank you. Mr. Meeker.
Just a point of clarification. I received a phone call the other day on this parcel and I wanted to make sure that it's out there in the record that what we're doing here is basically tying together a northern section of the city with a southern section of the city and kind of filling in the hole in between them with the boundary being the western side of Culbert Lane.
Other council questions? Seeing none, let's open the meeting to the public. Anyone from the public which should be heard on this agenda item?
Bill McGuire, Palm Coast. Your Honor, one of the points to sell this was improve the efficiency of service. Could you expand or could a member of your staff expand on what that means and how it could be quantified? And then the other thing is we've seen what the upside would be. What's the downside? What if the city does not annex the Graham Swamp? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Ed Coro. This beautiful piece of property has a rails-to-trails pathway with no parking at Culbert. And do we inherit the cost of building parking and arranging for that? Thank you.
Thank you. Next question. Next speaker. Next speaker. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. Efficiencies of service. Mr. Landon, how does this improve efficiencies of service?
Well, you know, anytime you have a compacted area versus areas that are drawn out, your services delivery is always more efficient. In this case, it's, the efficiency is more of the services that we're providing out in this area are not in Palm Coast at this time. It just makes more sense. So instead of actually a dollar figure as far as efficiency, it is more of if with this annexation, those improvements we are maintaining are actually in our city and not in unincorporated county is probably the better way of describing it, in my opinion. It makes no sense to have this type of Makes no sense to have this type of property that is integral part of our stormwater system. It is part of our trail system. It is part of our utility system, and it's not in Palm Coast. So that's really what the issue is.
Your answer begs the question, since it was not part of Palm Coast, how did we assume the responsibility for creating that trail?
Mostly because the original Palm Coast development, you know, the ITT, this was part of Palm Coast.
Grand Haven Conservation Area.
Grand Haven Conservation Area. Because of state laws, when you originally incorporate, there are some density issues in Graham Swamp created lesser density than would be allowed for a city to incorporate. So at that time, it could not be included in the initial boundaries of the city. Incorporated boundaries, although it was actually part of the original Palm Coast design.
The second question and the second questioner both address downsides. If we do not annex this, what are the downsides? What are the difficulties? And the question about, and Mr. Crowe is correct, there is no trailhead, per se, with parking for that portion of the Lehigh Trail. If we annex this, do we then assume the responsibility at some time in the future of providing that parking?
First of all, I think it's very important to make it clear that we don't inherit the responsibility of Lehigh Trail. Lehigh Trail is a partnership with Flagler County, the state, and that partnership will be maintained, and the county will continue to maintain Lehigh Trail. The state and the county do have a partnership, I believe it's a grant, that's coming from the Department of Transportation for a trailhead on Colbert Lane inside Graham Swamp. That is a county project. That will not be a city project. Those type of relationships really do not change here. And so I believe it's 2012 is when that project is intended to be funded, so that there will be a true trailhead, a parking lot there on Colbert Lane with a connection to the existing Lehigh Trail, once again funded by the state, but constructed and maintained.
By the county.
By the county. The other items that we're maintaining, we continue to maintain, the features that the county is currently maintaining, they will currently maintain. This doesn't change that relationship. That's what we meant by coordinating with the county and the state. This is really more of a housekeeping item than actually changing anything from a practical standpoint.
Counsel questions, comments, or a motion?
I move adoption of this item.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Meeker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeStefano?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Mormon?
Yes.
Mayor Nett?
Yes.
Mayor, this motion is passed five to zero.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number seven, resolution establishing a proposed millage rate for fiscal year 2012, the so-called trim rate. Mr. Landon.
We actually have a couple of presentations. At the last workshop, our engineering department, stormwater engineering department, presented to City Council a five-year plan for stormwater improvements that are needed in our maintenance of our very large stormwater system. We've been asked to present that again to City Council for the public's information. It's a little bit shorter version, but I think it highlights our stormwater system and how important it is, but also the need for maintaining it. Then after that, Ray is going to make a presentation, another presentation, because this is a series of presentations. Some of the staff back there said that they're about ready to, no, I won't tell you, Ray, what they say. Better not, huh? Okay. Seriously, though, that Ray will make a presentation on one of the required steps in our budget process, and that is the step of requiring the trim rate be established tonight. That trim rate is the maximum millage rate that City Council could adopt. It can go down after you adopt the trim rate, but you cannot go higher once you adopt that. So, but we'll start with Don Traeger. Don is here tonight because John Moden is out of town, and Don is our project manager in stormwater, so he's very much familiar with our capital improvement budget and capital improvement projects, and that's what this is about. I'm going to start off by also stressing that our stormwater system was designed and built for a community of 200,000. We aren't there, but we have a stormwater system to handle that size of a community. And that's one of the reasons why this is a very, very large endeavor that we have here in Palm Coast. And it was all built at one time, which means it all gets old at the same time, and that causes a real challenge. So you'll see from Don's presentation tonight, some of those challenges, but some of our efforts in the past that we've put into this, and also what our plans are for the future. With that, Don, please take it away.
Thank you. I was going to do a similar intro, but Mr. Landon put it very nicely. This slide shows our current inventory of stormwater features, just to show you just how vast our system is. We have 19 major canal control structures. These are the ones you see at Beltar and Pine Lakes, where they have a pipe going through and some kind of control mechanism for the water. We have 12 minor control structures. These are structures that basically serve the same purpose, but we have no way of controlling the water. 72 major roadway crossing culverts. These are typically where our canals cross under the roadways or regular roadway crossings where the pipe size exceeds 48 inches. We have 1,555 minor roadway crossing culverts. These are the ones that generally connect two ditches underneath the road. 145 culverts leading out to saltwater canals. These are typically at the end of a cul-de-sac and connected by a catch basin, and you don't see them unless you're either on the water or looking across the canal and can see them coming through a seawall. Where to leave off? 369 valley gutter crossings in the roadway. When they were first put in, this is where the swales have to cross the roadway. They're originally put in, which is a paved depression in the road. Generally, these are replaced when we do the resurfacing program. Instead of just paving another dip in the road and having the water in the road, we put a culvert pipe in there and flatten the road out and keep the water out of the road. We have approximately 1,100 miles and more of roadside swales that we maintain on a regular basis. 154 miles of drainage ditches, 58 miles of freshwater canals, 26 miles of saltwater canals, and all the other pieces that go along with it, the minor pieces, drainage in with spillways, catch basins, et cetera. This is an example of one of our control structures and how it's deteriorated. This one is at the end of Ditch 10, just west of Colbert Lane. This one, more people may be familiar with. This is at the end of Roald Palms Parkway, just before you get to Town Center. It's one of our major control structures. This one, no many people see, unless you know exactly where it is. It actually is behind Underwood and right next to I-95, and unless you know where to look when you're driving I-95, you would not see this. There are two other structures very similar to this that are all adjacent to each other and all in pretty much the same condition. When we rated all, when we inspected all of our infrastructure, we rated everything on a category of one to six for a structural condition rating, one being brand-new, five being deteriorated to the point of needing to be replaced, and six being non-functioning or failure. When it came to rating our stormwater canal control structures, we also included a hazardous condition rating. This is what would happen if there was a catastrophic failure. An example of a catastrophic failure is what happened on Florida Park not too long ago. The road was closed for several months. And then, to prioritize the replacement of these structures, we combined the two ratings for a total rating for each of them. Couple pictures of our canal control structures, the total ratings, highest score you can get is 11. We actually have two at that rating. One of them is the first one you see on the upper left. That's R1. This is the control structure you can see from Beltar and Roald Palms Parkway. I took this picture during the drought when we had some low water, and you can actually see the failure of the concrete that is actually below the water line on normal conditions. And this one is actually scheduled for the next replacement. BA1 is one we replaced this year. So instead of seeing the big concrete dam-looking structure there, it will be a more streamlined, actually much more solid, construction. We added them all up. This was our five-year program for replacement. As I mentioned, R1 is scheduled for replacement this year. Another one, BT2, for next year, which also has the highest rating you can get. This is actually a pipe and a control structure that goes under Verta Paradise Drive that connects the waterways from Verta Paradise Lake to the downstream portion. The following year, L1 and M3 are two smaller structures, so we combined two of them together for basically the same dollar value. And the pictures you saw earlier of I-1, I-4, and I-6 are the three structures that are immediately adjacent to each other. And during construction, it's just more prudent to do all three of them at once instead of doing the same steps three different times. And then, L4 is the last one you saw at the end of Roald Palms, so that one's scheduled coming up. There's actually a picture of Florida Park Drive when we had the catastrophic failure, for anybody that hasn't seen one. On the lower left, you can see the ATN T-box that had actually fallen in. This picture was actually taken from what should have been the edge of the road, or what was left of the edge of the roadway. Our major control structures, our major roadway crossings, I'm sorry. We don't have any rated as six, because if they do fail, the roadway's gone. So if they do fail, we have to replace them. They are actually in relatively good shape. We don't have any that are immediately in need of replacement. So for this budget year, there weren't, there was none scheduled to be replaced this year.
Excuse me, for a minute. Excuse me. Go back to that previous slide.
Sure.
Call attention to the cost of just doing one.
Yes.
I think that's critical for the citizens to understand what these projects are going to cost.
Absolutely.
Well, I'm sorry, I can interrupt for a second. I think part of that cost is the fact that it was done in crisis mode.
Yes.
If you had anticipated this, which I believe you had, you just didn't get to it, there would have been less. How much less? Who knows?
And actually, to clarify, this one should have been done this past year, but it actually gave out before, it actually gave out before I had a chance. And in an upcoming slide, you'll see a comparison of the emergency repairs.
Thank you.
So, yes. 2009 was a bad year for us. We had several bad storms, and we had several failures, and these are just a few that we had done. The upper left, Rippling Waterway, this is a structure you generally will not see. It's immediately adjacent to US-1. And when it did blow out, there was so much erosion there, we had to do some emergency repairs to the DOT right-of-way to save the Northbound Lane of US-1. So that one was replaced. The other upper right-hand corner, Crandall Cove, I know the picture's very small, but the lower picture, you can see where the concrete surrounding had actually caved in and was starting to undermine under the pipes.
Again, though, I have to keep stressing what the cost of these repairs are.
Absolutely.
I mean, they're, they are high, and we have to keep this system, we've got to keep it maintained, and we have a lot of catch-up to do.
Absolutely.
Okay.
With this one in particular, this one is actually on Palm Harbor Parkway. It's north of the new fire station. And as the erosion happened, it was actually creeping towards the road, so it really needed to be fixed before it actually got to Palm Harbor. The last one is actually behind the Out Club. This picture is actually taken from about the same proximity. You can see where it was just an open channel. The debris had actually gone into the saltwater canal, required some dredging so we could have safe passage through the waterway. And that's the new structure that is now in its place. This is the slide I was talking about, where we compared planned construction versus emergency repairs. This is
That's my point.
Five that I came up with. The total actual emergency cost was over $1.2 million. The engineering estimate for the replacement would have been more in the neighborhood of $774,000, difference being $445,000. In the previous meeting, I believe it was Mr. Meeker asked how our engineering estimates have compared to recent contracts that have come out. And with the last few recent ones, our engineering estimates have been marginally higher, so that number of $445,000, had we put these out to bid, would probably be greater. Minor roadway culverts, everybody's favorite. This one's on Burrows Drive, and if you look at the picture, you can see the pipe is extremely deteriorated. That's, the crack you've seen is about what was left of the centerline portion of this pipe. And the bottom picture is actually what it looks like today after Public Works has replaced it. And as you can see, we still have 82 that have been identified as needing replacement. And we are putting in for a routine program of 30 replacements per year.
Quit driving those truck vehicles over.
Yeah. There was another one, there was another one with a bus driving right next to it. We took that picture out. These are the pipes I was talking about, out through our, to our saltwater canals. The bottom picture is actually what it looked like before and after, so you generally don't see any of it. But you can see the severe deterioration of the pipe after we excavated it, and it's generally followed up by some deterioration of the wall itself. This is generally not done by Public Works. It requires some specialized training, special equipment, to be able to repair the seawall. So these are generally done by a marine contractor. And just recently, two more have been identified that need repair and are actually going out to a contractor now. Valley gutters, we just, I mentioned earlier, again, done primarily in conjunction with the road resurfacing program, but not entirely. Every now and then, the road has deteriorated to the point where we do have to do, we have to intervene and do something. Swale maintenance and rehabilitation. Recently, our focus for swale rehabilitation and maintenance has been to address all incoming swale issues within six months. That will be the primary focus. And as time and resources allow throughout the year, we will still continue to do rehabilitation as well. This was our five-year program. As you can see, throughout the five years, we recommend one structure replacement, where our major crossings are not in as bad a repair. I've limited it to one replacement every other year. Minor roadway crossings, a standard program of 30 per year. Saltwater canal pipes, started with two this year, bumped that up by a factor of two till we got to eight to try to play a little catch-up. Valley gutters, standard program of 10 per year, and a swale program trying to focus on 40 miles a year. When this is all said and done, after 2016, we will still have 18 structures remaining to be replaced, 53 major crossings to be replaced, 1,229 minor roadway crossings to be replaced, 114 saltwater canal pipes to be replaced, and 215 valley gutters. And swales will always be an ongoing. And it bears noting that we are at the end of the anticipated life expectancy already for most of this equipment. And that, if there was any questions?
Counsel questions?
I would like, can you give us an estimate of what we save by doing this work in-house as opposed to contracting?
I was just going to ask that.
Doing work in-house, I know with swale work and pipe replacements, it varies considerably because they're not one standard-sized pipe to be done.
Don, let me help you out.
Don, let me help you out.
Okay.
This current year, we estimated somewhere between $400,000 and $500,000 for just the one year. To do the amount of work that our crews are doing, if we contracted out, we'd estimate, we estimated it seems to me like about a half a million dollars we saved.
Other counsel questions?
Those pictures he's showing now, those are historical or current?
Those are current. Most of these pictures were taken within the last few months. I took most of these pictures during the drought, lower water levels, more of the structure was, structures were exposed. But yes, most of these are within the last few months.
So where are the king infrastructure?
Approximately, what is it, 35?
35 years old infrastructure?
Yeah. And most of the components that were put in have had an estimated life expectancy of anywhere from, depending on the product, 20 to 50 years. And no matter how you look at it, we're right in that area of, it's, it's there. We're there.
Mr. Lynn, this is a presentation in preparation for the true made. Do you have other presentations at this time?
Yeah. Ray is going to now give the presentation on the actual budget. Once again, this was part of our budget presentation to City Council that I was requested to let the public see, see the magnitude of the projects needed. But with this now, Ray will go through the presentation regarding the actual trim rate proposal.
Oh, I know everybody's excited, sitting on the edge of their chair waiting for another presentation.
It's the witticism we're waiting for.
We're waiting for the philosophical quote.
I shouldn't even have started that, should I? Okay. Just to kind of remind everybody, and actually, this whole presentation is just going to kind of be a reminder. I really only have about one new slide in here. You've seen all of the rest of them. Most of it is a quiz to make sure you were listening during the six previous presentations.
You're going to give a test?
Yep. Well, it'll just be a quiz, not a, not a written exam or anything like that.
This will be on the final.
Yeah, just to remind everyone, we have been working on this since the middle of May. We've done presentations here at the council meetings and also a couple of workshops recently, actually getting more directly into the budget numbers for next year, at least in the general fund. Again, this is all pretty much just reviews, so I'm going to go through these pretty quickly. Property tax impacts. We took a look at a property tax bill from last year. As you can see, Flagler County accounts for about 30% of the property tax bill. School Board, almost 50%. And the city is actually only about 17% of your property tax bill. These are some of the millage rates that are identified either by the state or through our policies. Our current rate is 3.5 mils. You have a revenue policy operating rate, which would be 3.9 mils. To keep your property tax revenue flat for next year, at what it was this year, the millage would be 4.01. Based on our discussions at the workshop, the resolution in front of you tonight proposes a millage rate of 4.0552, which is also the rollback rate. Under the guidelines laid out by the state a couple of years ago, when they were putting limitations on the local governments, you could actually establish a millage rate of 5.76 with just a simple majority vote.
Ray, before you move on, please explain the revenue policy operating rate.
Council adopted a revenue policy that included the millage rate a couple of years ago. That rate keeps us in the 40th percentile of millage rates statewide. It's based on last year's millage rates, plus there's a, an adjustment factor that is on the, the property tax calculation. Again, this is just the operating rate, so if, that would be the general fund operating rate. If you had a separate something for the capital projects or stormwater or something like that, that would not, that would be in addition to this. So this is just the general fund operating rate. You recall, we talked about perceptions of property taxes. Talked about this email I got that the person was concerned that the property taxes were just going up and up and that they weren't going to be able to afford to live here anymore. Property number one was the person that sent that email. The perception was that the taxes were going up because they had gone up for the last couple of years. But in fact, this person was paying $118 less in property taxes than they paid in 2003. In fact, the four properties that I had on here that I, that I picked, one through three were actually all on the same street, by the way. Of those, of the three properties, or the four properties, three of them actually were paying less property taxes in 2010 than they paid in 2003. And the other one was paying a dollar more than they paid in 2003.
Ray, hold there for a minute. The interesting thing about this chart is if you look at 2003, 2004, at the millage rate that was set at 3.4 and what they were paying under example number one. And then you move down to 2009 and 10 in a millage rate of 3.5. And in both cases, a higher millage rate is resulting in lower taxes being paid. A lot of people misunderstand it. They believe that if the millage rate goes up, their taxes are going up. And that is not necessarily the case.
And that was part of my other point with this slide. If you actually look at the millage rates and the actual taxes, it doesn't really seem to matter whether the millage rate goes up or it goes down. Somebody's taxes go up and somebody's taxes go down. The millage rate has, is only one factor that has anything to do with it. It's the value, the property values have probably the biggest impact, more than the millage rate does, on whether some, the taxes go up or down. This one we looked at at the workshop last week, again, four properties, three of them would go, and this is based on going to the rollback rate. The property values from 2010 at three and a half mils, what they paid, again, this is just city taxes. And going to the rollback rate, what they would pay in 2011 based on the property values that were posted on the property appraiser's website for 2011. Of these four, three of the properties actually would pay more in taxes, but they all paid different percentages of increases. And then the fourth property actually would see a decrease in their property taxes even with the millage rate going up to the rollback rate. So again, this is just an example. Every property's different. Everybody's going to be affected differently. And just, you know, just because of what happens with the millage rate doesn't necessarily mean that's what's going to happen with your taxes. In doing some comparisons, we went back to '07 to do most of our comparisons because that was kind of the peak before everything began to drop off. Even though I included the millages and property values back to 2001 on this slide. From 2007 to 2011, property values dropped about $1.8 billion, or about a 28.5% decrease. The millage rate actually went up a little bit over that time, a little under 8%. But the total tax revenues collected from 2007 to 2011 actually dropped by 23%, or about $4.5 million. And that's just from '07 to 11. Looking at it in total, over that four-year period, existing taxpayers actually saved about $8 million in property taxes over that four-year period. Again, this went back to the perception versus reality presentation that I did. If we took all of the taxes that people pay, and I even included taxes that were paid to the state or the federal government that came back to the city as grants or revenue sharing of some kind. The city actually receives about $460 per year, per resident, in tax, all tax monies, not just property taxes. In fact, of that amount, of that $460, about $200 per person would be property taxes. And what do you get for that? For $39 a month, you're getting code enforcement, fire and rescue services, additional law enforcement, all your street maintenance and resurfacing, your parks, sidewalks and bike paths, that includes maintenance and construction, and then all of the supporting costs that go with that from, that would include stuff like the finance department that keeps track of all that money and pays the bill, makes sure the bills get paid and those kind of things, and other internal departments like that. So you're paying per person about $39 a month for all of the services that you receive from the city in taxes. Okay. Revenues, property taxes, we assume that property taxes would stay, property tax revenues would stay flat. Our other revenues actually are decreasing about $640,000 from 2011 to 2012. We actually have gone in and so far, cut expenditures by about $523,000 to make up some of that, but we're still about $119,000 short of balancing the general fund budget at this point. Looking at expenditure history, at the bottom of this again, 2007 to 2011, our total cost actually went up about $640,000. However, during that four-year period, we opened two new fire stations. We had to staff those fire stations. That added 18 firefighter positions during that period of time. But then if you look down here, we actually reduced by almost 12 full-time equivalent employees. So that means the other departments actually saw reductions of about 30 employees because the firefighters actually added 18 to it. And our per thousand population number of employees actually dropped by about 1/3 of a percent, or 1/3, which is about 10%. So even though the city's been growing, we've been trying to reduce the number, or at least maintain the number of employees that we have without actually increasing. From 2011 to 2012, we're actually, are decreasing the budget, like I said, about $523,000, $24,000, which is about a 2% decrease. And we're also trying to, we're going to eliminate another five and a half full-time equivalent, full-time equivalent positions. So that will, meanwhile, we'll have eliminated about 17 and a half positions over the five-year period. Again, offset, some of that offset by 18 new firefighter positions. We also discussed some of the options that you would have to balance the general fund budget and possibly provide revenues for other items that we'll talk about in just a second. You could increase the property tax revenue. That 5.76 mils that I mentioned earlier would actually generate $21.5 million that you could do with just a simple majority vote. We talked about the possibility of moving state revenue sharing or local option fuel tax from the streets fund. Or you could also consider creating a utility tax or an electric franchise fee, which would generate, either one of those would generate about $2.5 million a year in revenue. This slide actually came, and y'all have seen it before too, came out of the presentation at the budget hearings last year, where we said if the 2011 budget would be sustainable if revenue levels out, the capital infrastructure will have to be addressed in the future. Any future cuts must come from boots on the street. Well, as we all know, revenues haven't leveled out. We're basically down about $1.9 million on our property tax revenues from last year if the millage rate stayed at 3.5. So we talked about the non-big-four departments. These are things in there that could possibly be, possibly be cut. But as you can see, if you add all of those up, you don't come anywhere close to $1.9 million. So the only place, as we said last year, that you could make significant enough cuts to be able to maintain a 3.5 millage rate would be boots on the street, which would be code enforcement, law enforcement, streets and drainage, and fire. And those are some of the options that we presented to you. And then again, they had additional considerations. We have nothing going in capital funding for 2011, and right now, we do not have anything proposed to go in capital funding for 2012. Stormwater maintenance, as you just saw in the presentation, is becoming a major concern. And trying to find additional ways to put money into the stormwater fund also to pick up the pace on some of the maintenance issues is something that needs to be at least considered. So as far as our budget schedule, we do have a couple more budget workshops scheduled, one next Tuesday where we'll talk about the proprietary funds and the little special revenue funds and some of the capital project funds. August 23rd, we will get back into the general fund and give you a presentation of the entire budget. Actually, we'll talk about the general fund also at the August 9th meeting. And then give you an entire budget presentation on, at August 23rd. And September the 14th is when we're proposing to have the first public hearing. And September the 27th would be the final public hearing. So tonight, what you have to, need to do tonight is establish the proposed maximum millage rate. As we said, the resolution proposes it at 4.0552, which is the rollback rate. And also, that resolution sets the first public hearing for Wednesday, September 14th, 2011, here at the Palm Coast Community Center.
At 5:00 PM.
At 5:05 PM, I'm sorry. I knew I left something off of there. And with that, Mayor, that's, that's the end of my presentation.
Counsel questions? None. We have the proposal. Let's open the meeting to the public and for the public wish to be heard on this agenda item. Please give us your name and your contribution to three minutes.
Charlie Erickson, Palm Coast. The other day, while I was watching a older TV show, something came on and I thought that I'd ask that tonight. First of all, I'd like to ask the audience or anybody up on the board up here if anybody remembers the name Clara Peller.
Anybody remember that name?
Clara, Clara, Clara was an 80-year-old actress who, back in the early 80s, came out with and worked with Wendy's hamburgers that featured the question, "Where's the beef?" So I had an idea. I looked up Clara to see if she was still alive, and unfortunately, she died in 1987. So I thought I'd be her replacement this evening. So I asked, "City Council, where is the $10 million..." So I asked, "City Council, where is the $10 million that you have set aside for a new City Hall? You have told us repeatedly over the past two years that you've accumulated the necessary funds to be able to build and pay for it upfront. Since the City Hall is, if I read the newspapers correctly, is a no-go, at least at present, let's use some of that $10 million to cover that $1.9 million shortfall and give the hard-working and unemployed residents of Palm Coast a break on this year's taxes. Budgeting, I realize, is a tough job, and it has to be complete and accurate, but I'd like to know just why we can't use those readily available funds to make up that shortfall instead of increasing the millage rate." Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bill McGuire. I live in Palm Coast. I always try to contrast or to find similarities in what the city governments are doing, the county, the school board, with what I had to do in private industry for about 40 years. I made lots of budgets, capital budgets, general fund budgets. We always started with, the president or the board of directors would call you in and say, "Hey, here's what next year's revenue is going to be. Here's what our sales are going to be. Now build a budget on that." And if the revenue was going down, then I'd get together with my staff and say, "Okay, I want each of you to come in a week, two weeks, whatever, and show me a 10% cost savings in the operation of your departments." And I wonder if, if we adopt a similar principle when we put our budgets together here, because when I come to the budget workshops and I listen to the presentations and I listen to Ray talk, all the numbers seem absolute, like if we do this, bang, this is what it's cost. If, if you've come up with any cost reductions, if you've found ways to do things more efficiently, I would plead with you, please come forward and say what they are, because, you know, the, the public is much more likely to accept what the council wants to do if they can show that, "Hey, you know, we used to do 40 miles of swales a year, and this is what it costs, but now, we've gotten so much better at it through methods, improvements, and technology, that it only costs this." Can we show any cost reductions on what it takes to, to operate this city? And if we, and if we can, we really should. Beyond that, I, you know, I don't want to stand up here and just rail against taxes going up and the millage rate and all that. There'll be plenty of other people that, that are willing to do that. But I, I do, I am concerned with the methodology that we use, and I'm concerned about the fact that the numbers that we talk about when we talk about the budget seem to be absolute. There's no, there's no flexibility in them. There's no, no wiggle room. Well, it's, it's either going, it's going to be somewhere between here and here, but we talk of them, if you do this, it's going to cost that, and, and that's it. So, that's, that's my comment. Thank you.
Dominic Pedesol, a resident of Palm Coast.
A couple of questions I'd like to ask. One is, we have a lot of empty homes in Palm Coast, a lot of vacant homes. I was fortunate enough to acquire one, and it's going to be sold very shortly. But these empty homes, there's nobody living in them, they're reconditioned, and the tax rate goes up 100%. The insurance goes up 200%. The water has to be paid, that's another $60 a month regardless if you don't even use the water. It's an expense that an investor, I'd like to get another home eventually when this one's sold, but it costs almost another $4,000 to renovate a home, a hidden cost that's not justified. Also, there are people in this one area where I bought this house, that in the tax code, they're only paying between $600 and $800 a year taxes. They send children to school at a cost of about $10,000 per student. Where's all this money, what are they, what are they doing? They're not paying enough taxes. The tax structure is inappropriate for the community. That's one feature. Also, you talk about the fire department. You want to eliminate a firehouse, very good idea down the road, because that, that building is quite obsolete at this point. But I look at the cost of firefighting and the cost of maintaining fires in vacant land. Vacant land is owned by investors. Why can't these investors have insurance on their land? Why should the community of Palm Coast send, spend a million dollars a year, that's what the figure's going to be, it's not $500,000 according to the newspaper, because this equipment has to be maintained more so after these tremendous fires? Why can't these vacant landowners have insurance or have wells on their property with generators? And have roads, accessible roads, so these fires can be addressed? Use a helicopter that's totally inefficient, that drops 300 gallons of water and does absolutely nothing? That's two features. The other thing is trees. You're looking for money. There's probably a quarter of a million trees, too many in Palm Coast. If you brought in a, a tree logger and said, "Look, give us a dollar a tree. This, this property is 30 years old. A dollar a tree," you'd have another quarter of a million dollars. There's too many trees in Palm Coast. How, how big do you want the trees to grow? I mean, are they going to go to the moon? What else? I think I've said enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Vicki Neary, former chairman of Palm Coast Service District Advisory Council and the Technical Review Board. I could agree with much of what the previous speaker said, except for his comments about the trees. What is it that brought us to Palm Coast to begin with? If not the lavish, beautiful trees and nature. You start cutting down one this year, two next year, three the year after. I left the north because I didn't want to see any more bare landscapes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. I'm Linda Fries, with Palm Coast, from Palm Coast. I'm wanting to address that lady that sent you the letter about how her taxes perhaps had gone up, and you justified the fact that in 2007, she really wasn't paying too much more. However, did you look at, in 2007, how much did a gallon of milk cost? In 2007, how much did a gallon of gas cost? In 2007, how much did it cost for this woman to buy her groceries? The point she was making is, it is costing her more to live. It's costing her more to live, probably because if she is retired, she hasn't had a cost of living increase in the last couple of years. If she's not retired, perhaps her salary has not gone up. Probably not. The reality is, she's trying harder to live, and I challenge you to try harder to make this work. Thank you.
My name's John Slawinski, live in Palm Coast. I'd like to ask you why you don't put an end to pumping money into the D-SAL plant. This seems like a black hole. Some of the other subdivisions have bailed out of the D-SAL plant, but I understand Palm Coast has put a lot of money into it from what I've read in the newspaper, and we're continuing to fund this project. St. John's Water Management has withdrawn all their funds. So in order to build the D-SAL plant, it's going to cost, what I read, I could be wrong, $400 million, which will be bonds, and our water bills will go up through the roof by building a D-SAL plant. So I'd like to ask the council, would you consider putting a nail in the coffin of the D-SAL plant and stop funding it, which would free up additional money for taxes to close the shortfall that you have? Also, the Enterprise Flagler, even though it's $93,000, what I think I saw up there, that's $93,000 that you could put additionally into the pot with the D-SAL plant. So you would probably recoup a decent amount of money to close the shortage that you have. Now, this lady here talking about trees. Do you ever see in the paper, after a hurricane, with all the damage on people's property, pulled down electric cables, crushed homes, everything, by trees? I agree, some of these trees have to be taken down. If a homeowner has a problem with a dead tree on his property or a diseased tree, he has to pay for it, and you make me replace my tree. I don't have any say. I have to call the city to get a permit to cut down a hardwood tree? I have entirely too many, but I cannot take one down, because this is the rules that you impose. So all I ask is just maybe to reconsider the homeowner that lives there on a piece of property that has a lot of trees that, that caused a lot of problems for them. But if you, as I said, if you look in the paper after any major storm that comes through Florida, mostly all the damage that you see, or a great portion of it, is from hardwood trees falling down, being blown over. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, my name is Ernest Roberts, and I'm a resident of Palm Coast, and I've lived here almost 15 years. And I'll tell you, I think it's very, very beautiful here. I think the trees are the most important attraction to Palm Coast. The trails, of course, I don't use them, I'm a little bit overweight, but I'll start doing that. But the reason I got up, I listened to some of the people that were voicing their opinions about taxes. Well, I, I've been here almost 15 years, and when I left Detroit, Michigan, in a suburb, my taxes were $2,600 per year. I didn't get my garbage picked up twice a week. My lot size was a giant 50 feet wide by 125. Now, I live over on Raymore, and I bought my house in '98, was built in '92, and my taxes are $895, almost four times less than what I paid in Michigan, and I was born in Michigan. So, I'm not going to complain about my taxes here. But I'll tell you one thing, I'm just glad that I see the difference between our city and where I came from. And there is a big, big difference, and you're doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
That's nice.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. Allen. I'm on Social Security.
Can you pull the microphone up just a little bit?
Is this better?
Yeah.
My Social Security income-
Could you give us your name for the record, please?
Norman Wyskoff. My Social Security income has been frozen for the last two years. And before that, the last year of Mr. Bush is what the figure is that we're paying. So an increase to me, I think, would be a hardship, and also to other senior citizens that just rely on Social Security. So I think some considerations should be discussed for senior citizens that have a frozen income in regard to increasing the millage rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor, next, Council. My name is Maureen Kelly. I'm a member of Palm Coast, and I'm here, first of all, to say, I can't believe it's been a year since I was here talking about the exact same thing. I'm a member of the Flagler County Tea Party, and, and according to the Vice President, we are now known as a terrorist group. We came together because we were concerned about being taxed enough already. We talked about this last year when you wanted to raise the millage rate, and every one of you said you would make a concerted effort. And now, we're here again, and we're talking about increasing the millage rate for things that should have been planned for 20 years ago.
We were in the city.
Please.
Regardless.
Please, let's-
What I'm saying is that, especially on today, of all days, when the debt ceiling bill was signed into legislation, even the President realizes that people are angry about their taxes being raised, whether it's federal, state, or municipal. We've paid enough already, and it's your turn to come up with some sustainable measures not on our backs. Thank you.
My name is Louis McCarthy, and I wasn't going to come up here, but, you know, there's such a thing as reasonable, and not to have no taxes is unreasonable. You just saw the sewers and all those things breaking down, and they said they were put in 30, 40 years ago. They were all put in at once. If they all start collapsing at once, we will have a big, big, big problem. And I think it wasn't stress that if we catch these things before there's an emergency, there is a lower price to pay for these items. It costs money to do these, do these things, and it's manpower too, because you need manpower to do these things. Now, if city workers do it, it's less money, because they're already on the payroll. But if it's an emergency, I've seen the figures, and the figures are astronomical, and I don't like to be taxed no more than anybody else, and I am on Social Security. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is, my name is Lee Willman, and I'm not on Social Security, and I did live somewhere else before, but all of that is irrelevant. You know, this is where I live now, and this is actually my third year of being here, and it's my third year of living in town. And I don't necessarily see that anyone is listening to what I'm saying over time either, and it gets frustrating. But, you know, just like at home, I have to look at my expenses, and I have to figure out what I can't do this year, or changes I have to make. I have suggestions, and I'll send those to my councilmen, but I think I'll take a minute and talk about the people that can't be here to speak. We have the highest unemployment rate in the state of Florida. We have over 200 homeless children in our school system. More than 50% of our students are now on reduced or free lunches. When I came here, it was 36%. Close to 200 people every week get their utilities turned off, and Access Flagler first was just started to bring all social services agencies together, and the number-one problem that people have in this area is food insecurity. But we have so many problems facing us, and I think it's wonderful for the people who are getting pensions or jobs and getting, everything is wonderful, that's great, but I think there's a lot of people who aren't in that position. And we really need to look at not increasing the mill rate, keeping it where it is, doing what we have to do to move forward. The stormwater issue, big issue. I live on Florida Park Drive. The result of that failure also created some other road problems and problems at my house that are still not resolved. But we've been a city, I think, for 10 years, and, and we should have had a plan, and, and we do need to address that, and maybe we need to address that separately. But I ask you, please keep the mill rate where it is for all those people that can't be here tonight, that are struggling, that need you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. Like Louis, I wasn't going to get up and talk, but it's imperative, right? These people are in the wrong place. They shouldn't be here. They should be at the school meeting, where they're going to vote on giving people a raise. Now, they're talking about a millage rate, but the school district is talking about raising salaries. Now, I haven't heard anything about the city making raises, but I did hear about a little layoff that I don't particularly care for. That's the fire department. Now, the one place I don't think anybody should touch is the fire or the police, because our lives depend upon them. Now, I don't care what you do, you want to raise my taxes, fine, but don't take my life in jeopardy. So, you can do anything you want. I'm happy with what I am. When I was up in New York, I was paying $6,000 a year. Now, I'm happy now. But leave the fire department alone, and let the people go and see the school district.
Thank you. Next speaker. You really aren't supposed to get one bite out of the apple.
I'm sorry, okay. I wanted to ask Mr. Speaker a question, an engineering question.
Can you do it after the meeting? Would that work for you?
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Gentlemen, ladies—
Your name—
I'm from New York—I'm sorry, Richie Agliotis. I live in Palm Coast. I was paying $10,000 a year in New York. That's neither here nor there. One gentleman—I don't remember who it was—said one thing, and I think that's the key, and nobody ever gives an answer about it. We had $10 million set aside, supposedly, for a new town hall. The town hall, I think, is dead at present time. If you need $1,900,000, you still got 81—8.1 million left. If, in fact, that $10 million is there, give the people a break. Just take a look at what's going on in this country. My country's going down the tubes, and nobody does anything about it. If that money is—is that money, in fact, there? Can anybody answer me that question?
We'll get you an answer when the public session's over.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Next speaker. Next speaker.
Good evening, City Council. Jason DiLorenzo, 39 Piedmont Drive. This morning, City Cruz prepared my road for repaving, and I can't say I was surprised because I got a green door hanger last week that told me they were going to do it. But I was kind of surprised because my street was repaved while my house was being built just eight years ago. So I think that kind of puts a point towards the street repaving program. We've done a fantastic job of bringing the streets up to a higher level. And now, I think we have an opportunity to slow down that repaving and move some of the dollars, like the local option fuel tax and the state revolving dollars, over to stormwater, where we can see that our infrastructure problems—that was clearly illustrated earlier today—so we can get to maintenance of those problems, so we don't have those high emergency repairs that cost us a lot of money down the road. So I would suggest that you look at that when you continue to do your work on the budget. But I'd also like to say that—I ask you to not look at a utility tax on electricity or an electricity franchise fee. We already pay a lot in communications franchise fees. If you ever look on your cell phone bill, you'll see those, or your TV bill as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. Seeing no one approach the podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. Let's see now, we'll try to get some of these questions answered. Two speakers talked about the $10 million that supposedly was available for a new City Hall. Mr. Landen, give us the status of those numbers.
Okay. First of all, we don't have the $10 million, never said we had the $10 million. More importantly, and I'm going to keep stressing, is that even if you have dollars for capital, if you use your savings account to pay your day-to-day bills, it's not sustainable, and it just causes problems in the future. And that has always been a key, is you don't use your savings account, if you will, for that. But with that said, we do not have the $10 million in the bank, never had. But I'm going to ask Ray to give the details as to where the $10 million proposal was coming from.
Okay. The biggest chunk of the $10 million was going to come from a repayment of a loan from—to that the General Fund made to the CRA Fund over several-year period of time to purchase land in the CRA area. That money would have had to have been borrowed by the CRA to repay to the General Fund. At this point in time, the CRA does not have the ability to borrow that money. That was about $6 million of the money. Another $1 million of that money was going to come from the building fund, Building Permit and Inspection Fund, to cover the cost of the building department portion of City Hall. That money cannot be used for the General Fund. So that million dollars is not available—
By state law.
By state law. That can only be used to provide that service. The remainder of the money, which was another—
$3 million.
Yeah, about another $3 million. Some of that was going to come from the Capital Projects Fund, from the sale of the other City Hall. In fact, that's really where the rest of that money was coming from.
Ray, let me help you out. The other was the utility capital—
Right, yeah, there was about $1.2 million coming from the utility capital fund, that's right. And $2 million coming from the sale of the previous City Hall that we had. So, only a portion of that was in cash. Some of that was coming from other funds that cannot be used for the General Fund. And, you know, therefore, we would be very limited. And then, as Mr. Landen said, you're talking about using one-time money to pay recurring expenditures, which, you know, the economy—or, well, at least the housing or the home values are not going to be back next year, which means you now have to come up with that $1.9 million, plus whatever the shortfall is next year. And it ain't going to take very long, and any one-time money you got's going to be gone.
Okay. The next—the second speaker talked about efficiencies of operation. Can we quantify savings that we have made? The one that comes to mind immediately is swale rehabilitation. When we were contracting that out, so-called outsourcing it, versus doing it in-house, we brought it in-house, and we've almost doubled our productivity. So there's significant savings there.
Throughout the years, last four years, and Ray went through all those numbers, we have made significant cuts. You know, throughout the whole city administration, all the staff has been cut, we have consolidated. I'll give you a good example, at least in my opinion. When I came here four years ago, there were 15 people that reported to me. I now have seven. Management, mid-management positions have been consolidated. We ask people to do more, wear more hats, and can go on and on about the cost savings and the cuts we've done the last four years. That is what makes this so difficult, is it's not a one-year type program. We've had the cuts the last four years, and so that is why we talk about—to make additional cuts, you have to go after the Big Four, which is our biggest cost centers. And then that's where the services out in the community are impacted.
Okay. We had a speaker talk about investing, I guess, as good a word as any, in vacant homes, and that there are hidden renovation costs. Yes, there are, the cost of doing business. Talked about fire costs, talked about vacant land, getting insurance to cover the cost of fire protection, I guess wildfire-type things, and then into tree logging. And I think the answer simply is, that's privately-owned property. The city does not have acres and acres and acres of pine trees ready to cut. Ray and he does.
Yes.
He's in the city, but we don't own it. And even if we could convince him to come in and clear-cut their land, doubtful that they would share the proceeds with us. We had a speaker talk about 2007 versus 2011. The individual whose taxes—
It may have gone up a little bit.
It went down a little bit. But the cost of milk and eggs and gas have gone up. And that's absolutely true, and it's also true for the city. The cost of our gasoline has gone up, the cost of our eggs has gone up, the cost of our asphalt has gone up. So we're facing—we're facing that same problem as everybody else. The desalination plant. I don't want to give you a big, long dissertation on this, but five years ago, six years ago, when things were still growing, when things were still booming, the Water Management District came to us, said, "You're in a crisis mode, you're going to run out of water if you're going to continue to grow." A whole series of options were looked at over a two-year period of time. D-SAL was finally thought of as the only sustainable alternative water source that was available. We had a partnership, a consortium, if you will, of cities, counties, that were looking at it. Growth, as we all know, has stopped, at least for the moment. And every city and every county that was part of that consortium is facing the same budget crisis that we're facing. There is no crisis at the moment, we're not about to run out of water at the moment. The desalination plant is on hold. There has been some discussion that I've heard, and it has not come to City Council yet, because there is a little money that we are administering on behalf of the consortium. My feeling, my personal feeling, we need to finish up the engineering work that is almost complete, use that money for that, put it on the shelf. There was some conversation about using some of that money for an outreach program. I think that's an absolute waste of time, because you're going to be reaching out to people in the same circumstances as we are. Somewhere down the line—and if you've got a better crystal ball than I do, five years, 10 years, 20 years, 30 years, somewhere down the line, Florida, northeast Florida, is going to either say, "No more development, no more growth, no more nothing, stop, then we may have enough water to meet our current demands." But if growth is going to continue in northeast Florida, in Flagler County, in our region, at some point, we are going to need an additional water source. And unless there is a major change in state law and state ownership of the water, and the thinking of the Water Management Districts, because there's five of them, it appears that the only viable source is desalination. Somewhere down the line, either growth stops forever, or we find an alternative water source. My personal feeling, the Coquina Coast D-SAL plant is obviously on hold, we're not putting any more money into it. We are holding money from various consortium members. My recommendation to Council, finish up whatever engineering work is done, put those plans on the shelf, they'll be there when we need to take them off the shelf.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add to that. The money that went to pay for everything that's been done on Coquina Coast is water-impact fee money. It cannot be used for General Fund expenditures, it does not come out of tax money. It also cannot be used for water operations, so therefore, it has no impact whatsoever on the water and sewer rates. So what's been spent to date has had no impact on the residents of Palm Coast.
If we were our own little private family, our own little private company, we could use our money any way we want, but the constraints are significant. We've had a number of residents talk about something that I think everybody in this council is aware of. We know people on Social Security aren't getting adjustments. We know there are homeless, we know there are kids that are homeless. We understand that. If we didn't understand that, we wouldn't be having these discussions. One speaker talked about, "Don't cut fire and police." That's part of—that's part of what—in my mind, somebody has stolen my line recently, but the difference between need-to-have and nice-to-have, those are need-to-have services. What we have to look at at some point is level of service, is it appropriate? But it's not where I'm looking to save money. The last speaker talked about something that we've talked about, that maybe we can slow down the repaving of roads since the critical need is gone, and move that money toward other infrastructure needs. And I think that's something this council will have to look at. Okay. I think we've answered most of the questions, to the best of my ability to write them down. Back to City Council. Additional questions, comments, a motion? Mrs. DeStefano.
I've sat here listening to all the comments about taxes, and what have we done? I believe you citizens are not aware of what we've been doing since January. We've been working on the budget, and the city manager heard what the city council has been telling him, "Cut, cut, cut." If we failed—I think where we fail is we don't brag enough of what we've done. We're not—you know, in the last four years, our city manager has really reorganized our city, reorganized the staff. They're all doing double duty, they're working as a team. He made—the manager had all department heads make cuts. We didn't—we didn't tell you what those cuts were. I mean, we cut, and we cut. We've done everything we can do, and we're at this point today. And what I would like to suggest to the manager and its council is, we go forward in the future, we need to brag at what we're doing in city government. I mean, the case in point is where Public Works took over a major responsibility for the swells, saved us almost a half a million dollars. But we don't—we don't brag enough, and I think that—I would like the citizens to understand that, that we really are trying to save. And even though we set this millage rate tonight, we have two more workshops where we could cut—if we could cut more, we will cut more, because everyone up here wants to—we all pay taxes. My Social Security's been frozen, my state pension has been frozen, so—and I'm paying $3 for gas, or $4 for gas. So, please understand that your city council, your city manager, and the department heads are really working hard to try to get this down. And to take money from a savings account to settle this year, what are you going to do next year? So we have to be wise in what decisions we make. So, please understand, we are trying.
The council comments.
I just want to agree with Mrs. DeStefano. You know, we're all in the same boat, you know, we're all—again, citizens here, aside from being on the council, we live here, we go to the same gas station, or wherever. It's—I think the city really has done a fantastic job. And you look at the awards that we get for all of our employees' efforts, and that's because they believe in the city, and they believe in what they're doing. I think the citizens ought to believe in their employees and the city, what the city's trying to do for them. We all came from high-tax areas. I was paying $11,000 a year, that's my salary, you know, in taxes. And I'm not complaining about my taxes here. It's—you know, when you're working, you pay the taxes. When you retire, you move someplace where taxes are less. That's what I did. The city had— The city had a program for citizens to come and learn about this city. I think if more people who are complaining and screaming about the city not doing this and the city not doing that, were to come to some of those academy classes, they will see what this city is doing, and they will appreciate what this city is doing, and they would not be screaming and yelling, but they'll saying, "Hey, look, you guys are doing a great job." My colleague is right, you know, we're all trying to move in the right direction, we all feel the pinch, because we're citizens also. So I support what she said.
Other council comments?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I just want to reiterate what our two councilmen previously said, but also, if you want to see us cut, then I would be interested in you approaching me and tell me you want to cut the fire protection, emergency service, police protection, roads, stormwater, tell me where you want to make the cut. And I will take that into consideration, but I also would take it into consideration when you call me and tell me that the fire truck got there late and your house burned down, and the emergency service people got there late and you died, or your relative died, or whatever, from a heart attack, and your roads have potholes in them, then I will remind you of what you told me to cut. You have to understand, there's so much cut that can be done. We've already cut to the bone, we've laid people off. Now also, those people that we laid off, you are not free and clear of those people, because the city still pay their unemployment compensation. Just because we laid them off, we still get a bill from the unemployment compensation to pay for those individuals. And I think, Mr. Lennon, was it a year, we paid for them, two years?
It keeps being extended by the federal government, and just...
Yeah, right now, they're up to 99 weeks, I think, so that's almost two years.
So we put them out of work, we tell them, "Don't come back," but they still get a check, and Palm Coast pays that payment. So we're not getting by scot-free by laying people off, and just remember that. As I was told many years ago by a young man that grew, went on to become a very high department defense official, there is no free lunch, and we just have to remember that.
Are you ready for a motion?
Mr. Meeker, you haven't spoken yet.
And I don't need to. I mean, when it's time for me to speak, when we get down to setting the final milled rate, and that's where I'll have my say on things. I will say that I've sat down with Mr. Brett, and it's always informative, sitting down, talking with Ray, playing what-if. I've got a what-if proposal, I don't need to submit it here tonight, because we'll be discussing it in workshops as we proceed along. So now we're at the point where we have to set the maximum milled rate, or the proposed maximum milled rate, I should say. And what people need to understand, this is just like throwing something on the table for discussion. What I don't want to see in the paper is, Palm Coast sets milled rate at 4.0552 mils. That's not what we're doing here. We're just putting something out there for discussion purposes, it's the maximum amount that we would be allowed to go to once we set it, and it has nothing to do with where the budget's going to end up necessarily.
That's right.
And people need to understand that. And with that being said, I'm going to motion to propose the maximum milled rate for discussion purposes for the rest of the budget process at 4.0552 mils.
My second.
Discussion on the motion. I'd like to offer a comment. I've not heard a lot of people screaming, I've heard people saying, "There are people hurting, times are tough," we understand that. And I'm going to make a personal commitment, and I think everybody in this council is going to make the same personal commitment, that we are going to continue to save wherever we can possibly save. But you can only mix so much sawdust with the horse's oats. At some point, if you allow your infrastructure to deteriorate, you'll find yourself at that point of no return where the costs, and it was illustrated earlier, the emergency repairs are 25% higher than what they might be if they were done on a non-emergency basis. Mr. Meeker, I'm going to ask that we amend the proposed resolution and set the milled rate, the trim rate, at 4.0. That guarantees that we will raise less money this year than last year. The trim rate, the rollback rate is 4. whatever it was.
0.5.
0.552. That would bring in the same revenue as last year. I'm willing to say, let's go to 4.0, that guarantees we'll bring in less, and then, as you pointed out, we've got a couple more workshops, and we're going to try to find ways to make it even less than that.
Your amendment is perfectly fine with me, Mr. Mayor.
And I second it, so I agree.
We need to further amend that to put the tentative hearing date in.
Well, we don't amend it, because that's part of the resolution, also goes on, it's a two-part resolution, to establish the trim rate as amended at 4.0, and to have the tentative budget hearing at 5:05 PM Wednesday, September 14, 2011, at the Palm Coast Community Center. That's the resolution as amended. Is there a second to the resolution as amended?
Second, yeah.
This is a resolution, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number eight, consent agenda. Does anyone want to remove anything from the consent agenda, all one item? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries that objection. This brings us to the public participation portion of the meeting, anyone wish to speak on something not on today's agenda? Please give us your name, limit your contribution to three minutes.
Vicki Neary, Palm Coast. I've heard a lot of talk and seen a lot of discussion in the newspaper about consolidating our fire department with the county. Please let me remind you people of what made us a city to begin with. Mary, you had said this. I was on the board, the advisory council, when the first big slap in the face came to our fire department, when we had put hundreds of thousands of dollars aside from Palm Coast Service if money to buy a fire hydrant, a fire engine, which our county commissioners quickly put in marine land, and left us with the old one with a toilet paper, piece of toilet paper wrapper, holding two pipes together in our fire truck. That was the first one. We can't let them get back in control. We know that they love to, seeing the progress we've made, and they're constantly treading water backwards. But don't let it happen, please. We became a city because of these constant slights. I don't know how many of you remember the study we had on the Palm Coast Parkway, where again, they spent $50,000 of Palm Coast money and a year of our time at meetings, et cetera, et cetera. And then when we brought the finished product to the county commissioner, they refused to even accept it for review. We don't want that kind of holdover again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. There you go.
Good evening. My name is Joe Canane, and I'm a candidate for mayor on September 13 in the primary. This question is for the current mayor. On Monday evening, July 25, you participated at a meeting held in this very chamber campaigning for reelection. I was not invited to attend. As you know, Palm Coast has a nonpartisan form of government. We are not allowed to show a party letter after our name on the ballot. If your party wishes to hold a private meeting, they should rent the room off-site and not in a public building funded by taxpayers. Don't you believe in a level playing field with equal time given to all challenges?
Thank you. Next speaker.
Jack Cal, Palm Coast. When they paved my street, they took my mailbox out, and they turned it. To a point where I don't think the mailman could have got any mail into it. Now, when I got back, I lifted it and I turned it, and I ended up in bed for the whole day with a bed back. Now, what I want to, that's beside the point, what I want to know is, I called the city, and a gentleman came to my door, and very polite, very nice, and he informed me that he knew about the situation, and he was going to have it done. What I want to know is, if the city repaired my mailbox, do you charge the people that are paving the road for the time that the employee does a job that they... What do you want to say? I could use a curse word, but I won't.
Understand your message.
Now, that's what I want to know, does the city charge them? I know it's not a hell of a lot of money, but if a man has to come to my door and tell me that it's going to be repaired, that means it's his time, my time, that I'm paying for. Then if somebody has to come and do the repair that the paper should have been, should have done, then we should charge, we should charge them. Now, second, you know that the host company that was supposed to be in the, wherever they went.
The airport.
They were dispossessed. Now, I'm being a little pointed. Everybody went to a big Hollywood movie, this was a great outfit, they were going to do tremendous things for the city. Well, I don't have to say anymore, okay? So what I'm trying to say is, when you, you know, when people come and say, "Well, you know, I got a good outfit that's going to come in," I think it means more investigation to see how well they're going to hold up. From what I understand, if you open up a business, your first three years are lost. So that means you should have the funds, or the whereabouts, to maintain your outfit for three years, and then you should start making money. So more investigation for these new companies that have come in.
Next speaker.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. You know, Mr. DiLorenzo, he just mentioned something that's happening in my block also. They're redoing the street, repaving, and we got the notice maybe about a month ago, and we said, "Maybe they forgot." And all of a sudden, this morning, I hear this rocket, boom, wah, boom, everything is going crazy outside, and they're tearing up the street. So I'm just saying, the first time it was done was maybe about nine years ago, just when we became a city incorporated. And that was the first time anything in my area had been done, because we had grass growing up in the streets, so, and it's starting to do it again around the edges. But this is what a city does. And for people who, you know, say, you know, I, look, I believe in conserving too, and I just got an air handler put in my house, and it cost me a few bucks, a lot of bucks. And so I know, I know, and, but I also go to the city council workshops, and I hear everything, and I agree 101% with Mary when she says, "You need to toot your horn." Lot more than y'all do, and your reporters need to report it. Even when you toot your horn inside the workshops, a lot of that is not reported.
I know.
And I know they think it's minor stuff, and they're only looking for the big stuff. But it's little things like that, that I don't get excited over some of the stuff that some of these people who just hear about things, and they get excited and emotional and everything else about, because I already know. And thank you again.
Thank you.
I can't resist, Mr. McCarthy. Shakespeare said, "The evil men do lives after them, the good is often turd with their bones." Next speaker. Next speaker, yes, Julius Caesar. It's a quiz show. Saying no, approach the podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, come back to city council, let's see. I'm not going to indulge in political rhetoric, campaign rhetoric, I'll answer Mr. Canane's question separately. Do we backcharge the paving contractor when we have to do repairs?
I know if there's any direct cost, the answer is yes. If it's city time, I'm not positive if we charge them for that city time. I'm getting told in the backroom that, no, if it's just staff time, we don't backcharge them, but any hard costs, if we have to, any supplies, et cetera, the contractor has to pay for that.
And a comment on that speaker's other comments, he's absolutely correct. The single largest reason for new business failure is undercapitalization. You haven't got the money to get through the lean years. That's not only true of small companies, that's also true of what are larger companies. If you recall, a while back, we were making a full-court press to bring a company here that ultimately went to Marco Island or someplace, they wanted $2 million cash upfront, not performance incentives, they wanted cash upfront. My sense is, I agree with some of the speakers, if you haven't got enough capital to get yourself through the lean years, you're not going to be successful, and we really don't need you. Lesson learned.
And microhose wasn't really us.
It wasn't us.
Wasn't us.
It was a county.
County fund. But, you know, we're all in this economic development together, so, I mean, microhose would have been a great success for all of us. It still may be. My understanding is, they moved out of the airport into smaller quarters, they're doing what the citizens are asking us to do there, cut back on your expenses, save some money, and maybe we can make it all through this.
And I want to confirm that there were no tax incentives or tax dollars given to the company whatsoever, so even though they're cutting back, the taxpayers did not lose any dollars with that business.
Okay. Discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda, we'll start with Mr. Mormon. Mr. Lewis. Mrs. DeStefano.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Meeker. I have one item. If anybody's still listening out there in TV land.
Oh, yeah.
The Board of Education is sponsoring a series of events on August 4, 7:00 PM, there are nine different locations throughout our county. They are encouraging, asking parents, especially parents of younger children, to come to these meetings there. They're informational, they're going to share with the parents the new graduation and promotion requirements. You know, it's interesting, our Board of Education, at the same time that their funding is being cut by the state, the state is increasing graduation and promotion requirements. It is essential that parents, especially of younger children, get involved early in their children's education. That's the future of our nation. They're talking, they're going to talk to the parents about the advantages of good attendance, it should be obvious, but sometimes the obvious needs to be restated. They're talking about how parents can help their children be successful. They're talking about how you can access your children's records online. We probably all had a friend when we were growing up who hid the report card when they took it home. Mom and dad, mom, grandpa, there are ways of accessing your children's records, you can know how your children are doing on an ongoing basis. August 2, 7:00 PM. August 2, 7 PM, there are nine locations.
August 4.
I'm sorry, August 4. What did I say? We're going to say it's 7 PM. August 4, 7 PM, nine locations. Pinell City Hall, the Government Services Building, Espanola Community Center, Hidden Trails Community Center, African American Cultural Center, Flagler County Public Library in Palm Coast, the Palm Coast Community Center, Havant Beach Community Center, and the Wickline Community Center. Parents, get out there. It's going to be an interesting night. Not only is it going to be information, there's going to be information about how to apply for free backpack and school supplies, there'll be free food and door prices for the parents, not for the kids, lunch program applications and registrations. If you've got kids entering school, in school, try to make one of those nine different locations. Discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
Nothing to add, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion by city manager of matters not on the agenda.
A couple of things. One of them is, you know, a lot of talk about businesses being undercapitalized and, and efforts for the large businesses. I just want to keep stressing that based on the leadership of city council, you know, we've established Prosperity 2021 as really our guiding tool for our economic development efforts, and that's really to help existing businesses, those small to midsize businesses. Our Business Assistance Center is much busier than anticipated, that's a good thing. And a lot of people, I'm hearing a lot of positive comments. The one thing I'd really like to announce right now is Jill Roy, with help of some city staff, have gained support out there in the business community here in Palm Coast to have the private sector fund a business-to-business exploit. How can businesses help do business with each other right here in Palm Coast and the rest of Flagler County? We've gotten support from large corporations such as Walmart, they've actually have agreed to help sponsor and help pay the cost, but also be there to see if there are local businesses that can do business with Walmart and some of the others. I think that's very consistent with what we've been talking about, and also you're going to see, not to steal thunder, but a proposal for how the Business Assistance Center is working with our procurement staff to make sure that as many of those tax dollars stay here in supporting local businesses, and we're working on, on doing that. So I think you're going to see more and more of those efforts, and that's really what our focus has been based on direction of city council. And I think if each one of those businesses could grow an employee or two, that's actually in some ways a lot stronger for the economy than that wish of a new corporation. Last comment would be, you know, we do have our first tropical storm that seems to be headed towards Florida. Right now, it doesn't look like a direct hit, which is a good thing.
Tell those trees to look out.
Yes.
Tell those stormwater bites to look out.
Yeah, right.
Sorry to interrupt.
It is, it is that time to, everybody to stay alert. Obviously, we've had those conversations with all our departments involved with any kind of storm efforts. We're going to get together tomorrow morning and continue to make sure that we're ready, but it could be as early as this weekend that we would get a tropical storm off our shores. But you have to keep, stay tuned because they do change, but right now, it's just kind of reminder, we are in the middle of storm season.
If I can just piggyback on that, you know, an ounce of preparation. It doesn't look like this storm is going to hit us, but it's not a bad idea to keep the car gas tank topped off. It's not a bad idea to have a couple of days' worth of emergency supplies in a little Tupperware bin or some such thing that you can throw in the car. It's not a bad idea to have some cash available.
Cash.
Credit card.
What's that?
When the power goes out, credit cards aren't going to do you a lot of good at whatever gas station will be open. So an ounce of prevention worth a pound of cure. Mr. Meeker.
Vote to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for your participation.
Thank you.
The C-word.
Old-fashioned money. Before you put up anything for those, for these trophies. The Tea Party is going to get to you. Why you got society money?[1726.13]